Folks, we will call to order the March meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is roll call, please Jeremiah.
Yes, Chikovitz.
Here.
Love.
Present.
Wetherby. Johnson.
Present.
Watson.
Present.
Taylor.
Present.
Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Cotton is not here. All members are present.
Thank you, sir. Next item is consideration of the minutes from our January meeting. Commissioners, I presume you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from that meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the January minutes? If there are none, we would entertain a motion for approval of the January minutes.
Move to approve, support.
Commissioner Love, Commissioner Taylor, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? January minutes are approved. Next, we have case 2204. This is a request for zoning exception permit and a site plan review for a gas station at the former site of the Brass Lantern. Staff has presented us with some information on this and a copy of the site plan. And a proposed resolution that includes both the site plan and the zoning exception permit. I'm going to take a minute to review for the commission and the public the requirements for a zoning exception permit. We'll hear from the applicant and they can tell us whatever is they would like to in support of their application. Commissioners may ask the applicant any questions that they may have. We'll take comments from the public related to the application either for or against the proposed use. We'll review any comments received from the public by either mail or phone. We will then close the public hearing portion. And the commission will discuss this application. As we consider an application for a zoning exception permit, there are both general and specific criteria. We'll get to the specific criteria when we go a little farther on. We need to consider whether the granting the permit will have an adverse effect on the environment. Is the proposed use compatible with the adjacent and surrounding properties? And is the proposed use consistent with the city's future land use plan? With that said, we will hear from the applicant. We have reviewed this proposal in general before, but just to get it on the record for the zoning exception permit, if that applicant would step forward, identify yourself and briefly tell us what it is you're proposing to do. Please, yes.
My name is Rex Chris. We want to, I mean, it's pretty much outlined there. We want to put a gas station convenience store there. Something similar to our other stations, if you've seen them around the county, just something similar to that.
Commissioners, questions for Mr. Chris? At the moment, we're considering the zoning exception permit. So we will, and we'll get to the site plan review once we've done, once we've gone through that. So. Any questions for Mr. Chris? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. We can consider granting a zoning exception permit based on the following development standards. There has to be a hundred, a minimum of 120 feet of street fronting. The lot shall consist of not less than 12,000 square feet. All buildings shall be set back not less than 40 feet from the proposed right of way. Gasoline pumps, air and water hose stands and other items shall be set back not less than 10 feet from all street right of way lines. Driveway widths entering the gasoline stations should have a maximum width of 35 feet. Any driveway approach will enter the property not less than 20 feet from the intersection formed by the existing proposed right of way lines. Curbs should be in accordance with city standard specifications. Signs and lighting shall be shielded from residential, any residential property. No sign storage nor display of any kind should be allowed within the street right of way. And all signs and displays should be located as not to obstruct the view of any vehicles. There should be no outside storage or display of any kind except for the display of new merchandise related to the primary use of the gasoline station for retail sales. There should be no parking of damaged motor vehicles except on a temporary basis for 72 hours or less. Junk parts and junk vehicles shall not be kept on the outside of the building. Automobile leasing may be permitted in conjunction with a gasoline station or gasoline filling station on special approval. Mr. Chris, before we get to the site plan review, I presume that your proposal meets all of these criteria.
We can, we have plenty of space.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this particular proposal? Sir, if you'd step to the podium, identify yourself for our records.
Thanks. Fred Lucas, bearing on behalf of Moonamish Rob. I'm more related to this, not the specific items, but more of the general considerations for zoning exception. And as I understand those general exceptions, they basically involve the question of whether it is compatible with the neighborhood, the impact it's going to have upon neighboring properties and matters of that ilk. Concern that we have with respect to this particular use of the property at this location is first of all, the proximity, close proximity to an existing gas station. Now, while I understand the existence of competition is not a legitimate concern for the community in terms of, you know, you're not supposed to be picking between which property is going to be doing what. There is a concern in terms of the need for diversity of uses in a particular area and whether or not there's really and truly a need to have a gas station in such close proximity to an existing gas station. Especially in that area, which is across the street from a school and on a very busy road, US 223. I don't know whether or not there's been any, what the highway department has said relative to the development of this particular location. Whether there's any requirements for deceleration acceleration lanes coming out of this facility. I don't know whether or not the highway department has reviewed the question of, of whether a driveway for ingress and egress to the site has been approved by the state highway commission because I know that they are required to provide, either them or the county to provide approval of those anytime you put a driveway into a, into a highway like that. And I'm concerned about that because of the proximity to the schools. So for those reasons, I, my question is number one is whether or not that's been carefully evaluated in terms of how that's going to impact the existing traffic patterns on US 223. Especially as I say, in close proximity to the existing gas station that's already there and has been there for a number of years. And I wonder whether or not that is an issue that, that the planning commission should look at more closely before making a decision on this matter. Now, my client has, you know, received petitions from a number of people who are opposed to the, to the idea of an additional gas station. I can provide you with signatures later on if you so desire. But I think the more important question is, is whether or not there's been a careful evaluation of, of traffic impact. And how it's going to, how this, this development on this location will have on traffic impact. You know, unlike the prior, the prior use of this property, which was, we all know was the Brass Lantern. You're not getting the volume of traffic going in and out of the Brass Lantern as you're going to have coming in and out of the gas station. And the variety of vehicles coming in and out too. We're not just talking about passenger vehicles, but there's also going to be trucks coming in and out. If nothing else, to provide fuel to the, to the site and, and to restock the facility and whatnot. So it's going to have a definite impact upon traffic in that area in terms of how it's going to flow in and around that facility. And I think that that's a very relevant consideration for the planning commission to, to take a look at more carefully. And to determine whether there has been a traffic impact study that has been done. What the states and or the county road commission's position is relative to these matters. And then before acting, review those matters. And if they, they indicate that there's no issues, then, you know, that I, that's something for the, for the planning commission to be aware of, but I did not see anything in any of the documentation that I've received. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremiah, because I just haven't seen it. There's nothing I see relative to the traffic that has been provided in the, in the packet that I've seen. And I think that that is probably one of the most important considerations for the development of this site for, for a gas station is how it's going to impact traffic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. No, anybody else that wishes to address the planning commission on this particular matter?
Yeah, Ken Tocars, 110 South Locust. My concern is that there's another gas station at the corner of Sand Creek and I don't know if it's US 223 or West Mami, but they've had a sign that blocks traffic. So like this gentleman was saying, I hope you don't let them put a sign between the back of curb and the sidewalk because people can't see coming out of the parking lot. So I hope you'll address that with this property. The other concern I have is how close this is to the city well for water. I believe it's just north. I think it's far enough away, but I didn't see a review for that. Lastly, I guess I wanted to find out where does West Mami Street end and where does it start? I looked for this property and I couldn't find it. Right when you get up to Bell Ford, Bell Ford has an address of US 223. And there's a couple of other businesses that have addresses of US 223. This one has West Mami. Can anybody on the commission clarify where West Mami ends and starts and where US 223 ends and starts in the city of Adrian?
Where that street stops and starts is really not relevant to our consideration tonight. The property is assessed as 1853 West Mami Street. Anybody else that wishes to address the planning commission? Sir, if you'd step forward to the microphone and identify yourselves.
Sure. Name's Dave Slack, a resident of Adrian for about 24 years. I frequent the gas station. That's in question right now. Great family, great people, meet the needs of the community. The problem is with the Brass Lantern, that's been vacant for a long time. Had a liquor license, as you know. Place is dead. With the administration heading towards electric cars, I don't even know why we're talking about building another gas station. That's number one. Number two, should look and see what happened on Main Street. When you got all these cannabis locations, all up and down the main street, you're going to add another gas station. All you're doing is trading dollars and taking away from the community that's here to try to provide for their family. The other thing in question is when the Brass Lantern is located on the, what, south side of 223. Any vehicles, okay, that want to make a left-hand turn that's heading in the opposite direction? Truck or vehicle, could you imagine the impact that it's going to have on the traffic, especially in front of the school? When they have the water park there and everything, you're going to have a backlog of cars and trucks over there. People trying to make a left turn into the gas station when that's proposed. There's no light there. I think, I think it's a mistake. I think it's really a mistake. You've got the gas stations right over there on Beecher. You got one right over here on, on Mami. You got the Myers, you got, you got everybody covering, everybody looking to make a living. That gas station for Brass Lantern, all that's going to do is take away from the community and cause a lot of problems when it comes to traffic congestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll speak. Eric Kennedy, 109 East Mami. Since someone brought up cannabis, I'll speak against the gas stations. Everybody knows this is a free market and everybody knows in the gas station market, right before the light is the best location.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Clement, did we receive any written or phone comments on this particular?
We did, we did have a phone call comment that discussed with the neighboring tax attorney, I believe. They were concerned about pedestrian walk-through. And that was the only relevant discussion.
Okay, thank you. Having heard all of that, we will close the public hearing portion of this review and we will go to planning commission discussion. Jeremiah, in response to one of, one of the things that was, that was mentioned, has M.D. reviewed this particular project?
Mr. Sheriff, I could answer. So our engineering services director did have communications with M.D. district engineer. They were fine with the reuse of the existing driveway, but we asked the applicant to widen the driveway to 30 feet to provide for two outbound lanes, a left and a right turn lane, and which, which they did do.
Okay, thank you. So, so M.D. has had input on this project?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, discussion. With regards to the zoning exception permit, I've reviewed the criteria that would allow us to grant a zoning exception permit. And I believe that the, we can get into some detail as we look at the site plan. And perhaps we would consider both the zoning exception permit and the site plan as one action item. Unless there's some objections to that.
I think that's appropriate considering a lot of the zoning exception permit criteria involves what's in the site plan.
Okay, if that's okay with everyone, we will move on to the site plan review. Well, we're going to take them as one item. Okay, that was, that was my question just then, right? And we have staff's review of the site plan. Jeremiah or Greg, do you want to comment on?
So there, yeah, I'm happy to do that, Mr. Sheriff. There, there were three issues, I think, that we took with the site plan that are underlined in the staff review. One was just the shape of the stormwater detention area and the direction that the discharge is directed. So currently it's just a square directed directly toward the south property line. We're suggesting that it should be a naturalized shape and directed sort of to the southeast, which would maximize the amount of the applicant's land that the stormwater, as it leaves the detention area would, or excuse me, retention area would, sorry. Would traverse before it leaves the site so that it doesn't dumping right on to the neighbor's property. So that's our first suggestion. The second is that we think they overparked the site. They didn't count parking spaces right at the pumps, which can be counted toward the required total. So we think they can reduce the number of parking spaces that they're providing and therefore pavement that they need on the site. And then the third thing was the lack of a, well, the two, two related landscaping issues, I guess. The plantings along West Mami Street are currently false cypress and arbor bydy, which we don't think are going to tolerate that environment very well and are really appropriate as frontage landscaping. We suggest those be replaced with, with perhaps canopy trees out there. And then there is a requirement for a transition landscape strip or a fence, either or, between the residential district of the south, which is Carriage House Apartments and this property because of the difference in zoning. So that, that has not been provided for on the site plan and that would need to be provided for along that south property line. With the exception of those issues, we found the site plan to be in order.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
How many pumps are there? How many pumps would you have?
Six.
Six? Okay, so you could reduce, where would you reduce those six spaces?
So of the parking that they've got lined up along the west lot line there, you know, I, I would reduce the six that are the furthest away from the station to, to the actual convenience store because those would be least likely to be used. So probably the six closest to West Mami Street, I would suggest.
Mr. Chris, I presume that you don't have an issue with any of the things. Mr. Elliott?
Yeah, we want to grant happy whatever.
Okay. Commissioners, questions or comments on the site?
If they didn't want to remove the parking spaces and keep them, is that allowed?
They're allowed to have 120% of what they are required to have. So I'd have to do the math on that, but I think Rex would probably rather not have to pave more of the site than he needs to. So I don't think there's an issue with it.
And one of the rationale there is, is to reduce the amount of impervious land. So the smaller we can make that while still having sufficient parking, the better. Other comments or questions from the commission? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on the specifics of the site plan? Hearing none. Commissioners, we have reviewed the requirements for granting a zoning exception permit for a gas station at this location. And the chair would suggest that we could find affirmative for all of those if we so chose. Staff and plan commission has reviewed the site plan and found it to be in compliance with the ordinance. With the exception of those three items that Mr. Elliott outlined. If we so chose to approve the zoning exception permit and the site plan with the provisions that we had addressed of those three provisions, we could, I believe, do so.
I move to approve the resolution. Support.
Commissioner Love and Commissioner Taylor, motion to approve the resolution that staff has provided that would approve the zoning exception permit and the site plan with the three conditions that were mentioned. Commissioners, is there any discussion?
We are certain that all issues concerning the traffic flow have been addressed. I know you talked to M.D., but was there any further study that?
There was no traffic study done. M.D. didn't require it. It's not really what's in our purview to require that. Like I said, M.D. was comfortable with the reuse of the existing driveway. And so this is an improvement upon what they were comfortable with and that it's a wider driveway provides for separate outbound lanes. So we're hopeful that that will provide more capacity for the outgoing traffic.
Any other questions or discussion? We have a motion in support for approval of the resolution. If we can have a roll call vote, please.
Sir, Roberts.
Yes.
Watson.
Yeah.
Wetherby.
Support.
Johnson, support. Taylor, support. Chikovitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Wish to pass you names.
Thank you. Thank you. Case number 2208, 1107 East Beecher Street, a zoning exception permit for marijuana cultivation and dispensary. I understand that we are still waiting for additional information for this application. And the proposal is to table it for this evening?
That's, yeah, that's correct. They have, they're, they're not ready for action.
Okay, we would entertain a motion to in that case to table case number 2208. Motion by Taylor. Support from Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor of tabling this matter, please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion's table. Case number 13, or I'm sorry, case number 2209, rezoning request for a planned unit development at 1357 South Main Street, the Adrian Mall. Commissioners, I believe you have information in your packet that outlines proposals here. Is there someone here to speak to that? If one of you would step forward, one or all of you would step forward and identify yourselves for our record?
Three at once.
Alyssa O'Neil from the Collaborative Architects.
Great, make him with the collaborative.
I'm Dan Garnell with the Adrian Development Group, one of the ownership group.
Thank you, Mr. Garnell. I, I should maybe just take a moment to mention that what we're, let me find my paper. This, or I say too much.
Much paper.
Too much paper or say too much, yeah. You know, we, we've, these folks have presented to us before in a very preliminary, in a very preliminary matter, manner. And that was an opportunity for us to give them some feedback and just kind of get a handle on what it is that they are planning to do. The next step for them is what we refer to in our ordinance. And folks, if you haven't reviewed it, this is in article 11 of the zoning ordinance. This is for consideration of an approval in principle. It's another opportunity to give them feedback, to give the applicant feedback. This is not final approval. We will need to see if, if in fact, we do move forward with this this evening with the approval in principle. This is kind of a flag for you folks to come back with a very detailed proposal relative to both physical structure and scheduling. And at that point, if it is in fact approved, then it goes to the city commission for approval. So I realize it sounds a little redundant, but we're one step farther than we were the last time we heard this and with a little bit more detail. And with that said, I'll turn it over to you, if you don't mind, to talk us through what it is that we're looking at here.
Thank you. I'm going to have Alyssa go ahead on behalf of the collaborative and we'll kind of go through maybe just a quick summary of the meeting we had here before, what we learned from meeting with the trades commissioners. Come back here, we made some tweaks to the design. And then if there's other questions or, or thoughts, we'll entertain those at that time.
And I have like a little presentation that matches their packet. Can it go up or? Do not. Probably put it on.
What did we do before technology?
I know.
Yeah, add more paper.
More paper. How can we have so much paper?
Charts and graphs.
They, they have this presentation, kind of.
Yes, yes, we have, we have, we have paper copies of it, so.
Okay. So as we think about phase one of redeveloping the Adrian Mall, the thing that Adrian Development Group would ask for first is the ability to split off some of the property into site condos in order to get some commitments to build additional restaurants and then New Life Church and also remarket the JCPenney building. So some of those, they have already some commitments to get those done and then use that capital to demolish the portion of the mall south of the main court that is in the worst shape. So that would be the first phase.
Would be condo-ized. It would still maintain ownership with the development company.
Yes.
Okay.
Although Although some of the parcels, actually, it's our understanding, under the condominium process, can still have ownership other than the Adrian Development Group, but within the planned unit development, still under shared use, shared parking, shared utilities for those that are allowed to. Otherwise, separate structures would have their own utilities and services within the planned unit development.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
Are you, you seem to be proposing, or at least showing both Plan A and Plan B. Are you still in the decision-making process?
So the intent is to allow flexibility in the event that some of the outlots are not marketable. So in the event, for example, two and three are shown in the plan, if those weren't marketable, then that could become parking to support a larger retail portion north of the boulevard that's being proposed. So again, it's just flexibility to deal with market conditions and what kind of retailers might want to come.
So, so, you know, I'm sorry that we've already interrupted your.
It's fine, you've seen it before.
But, so the, so the two proposals, the two concept proposals are not intended for us to pick and choose. They're there to give you flexibility as to how this development unfolds.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Please continue, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so with the mall abatement and demolition, that would finish phase one and allow them to move into phase two, which would be to create the boulevard that connects Main Street to Winter Street. And that would come through what's currently the mall now and allow more parking amenity space. So that's meant to be the heart amenity space of the development. Seating, attractive benches, pedestrian space, more of a calm traffic through that center. And then they could prepare to build the buildings on the north and south of that boulevard. So then phase three would be to build out that retail. Again, the flexibility that maybe the north wouldn't have parking, it would just have that space filled with retail. And then the mixed-use building south of the boulevard, that would be phase three. And then the final phase would be the development where New Life Church currently is, between Dunham's and J.C. Penney, so that last piece of retail, that's the interior mall now. And again, if there was interest, maybe that would be ahead of, you know, phase three, you know, we're just guessing that that would be the order.
So the new retail, retail in addition to what's already there with Dunham's and Hobby Lobby and Ollie's would be relatively small relative to the overall space.
That's how we envision it. You know, we currently don't have commitments or seemingly interest from some larger, you know, retailer, some people have said, well, gee, wouldn't it be great to get a target out at maybe even the site where the old J.C. Penney Building is? We've engaged some of those larger retailers, and they don't seem to have the interest in that. Now, you know, if that were to change, obviously, that we'd have to come back and make sure all those uses and compatibility with what's already going on is going to meet the approvals, but that's not the way we see it currently.
And it wasn't a judgmental question.
Sure.
Just verification, so. Anything else?
And I can address that like a common space question, because you had mentioned in your response that you were concerned about the amount of common space for the PUD. And the original mall was not built with that kind of consideration for outdoor open space. We understand it's a concern, and we would just propose that if we were to meet that twenty percent, a large portion of that might be landscape space that's not maybe accessible to folks. You know, you don't necessarily go out and sit in the middle of a parking lot on an island, but it does help beautify the site and add in some of that permeable surface. There's currently no treat islands out there now, so.
And I don't think our ordinance, although it requires twenty percent, doesn't dedicate to open space, I don't think it specifies that it be publicly, you know, that it be accessible space or sitting space or playground space or anything like that. It's just.
Mr. Chair, if I can, it doesn't designate it that, and if you remember the PU did, we, PUD we did over on Church Street, we did allow them to do landscape islands as the open space.
Yeah.
So they can propose that. It does not have to be actual grass play areas. It can be open space.
Yeah, that was a point I wanted to bring up. Just, you've got a lot of parking there, and I hope every space is filled, and there was a waiting line. But, and we can't, we don't require this now, but it would be interesting. We talked about having some islands that, you know, when we're across the street there, a year or two back, if that could be incorporated in the parking. I don't want to make this project not financially viable, but it could be a calming effect for that huge. You know, I drive through there now, and I always like, I always follow all the lines, but most people just cut straight across because it's a lot shorter, you know.
Yeah.
And that would be nice if we could slow that down. I think your boulevard will do, take care of that problem.
Agreed.
Yeah.
And thank you for those comments. We're, we're very well aware of some of those very things that are important. They've been discussed at a couple of these meetings already, and as we get a more detailed plan, we hope we can even show some of those plotted to satisfy that.
So I know there's some concern about the parcel on the east side of northeast corner across the street. You show that as parking now. Would the plan be maybe to turn that into a green space if that's not, you know, to help you get your numbers?
Yeah.
We apologize if we don't have this up on your screen, but that's actually wiped away because we heard that pretty loud and clear. I think we expressed at both the meetings we've been at that we sort of put that there only because it was there and it was empty. But there were safety concerns, you know.
Yeah.
It would be pretty hard to actually use that and get across that street in a safe manner. So we've just showing it back to leaving it as a grass area like it is currently.
I think this is a great plan. I, kudos for thinking out of the box here. I bet you the mayor agrees.
Commissioners, questions for the developers, comments?
What, what, what do we need from us tonight? Like, what are we deciding?
Well, after we've heard everybody and if.
That's why I want to know what, if there's questions I need to ask, that's why I'm a little confused on what.
We would, we would, if we so chose, we would approve this as a preliminary developer, preliminary development plan. And with the understanding that they come back to us with a full-born plan.
Okay.
And at that point, when we consider it, then we would move to, if we so chose, to move to approve it and send it forward to the city commission for their consideration. So this is more, we will take, we will take some formal action on this, either to approve it or disapprove it this evening, but it's mostly for feedback to the developers. In the, yes, conceptually, we think this is a good idea or a bad idea, please come back with more details. It's just, it's a lot similar, it's very similar to what we did when they were here previously, just one more step.
And they've given us a plan and the phasings, and that's, that's certainly helpful to know what you're going to do.
My only concern with it is that, I think I expressed this when you were here last time, is that I would like to be assured that phase one will include, and it is listed this way, but it would include the demolition of the center part of the mall. What I really don't want to have happen is to have the J.C. Pennies become a storage facility, and then we walk away.
Yep, yep.
And that I would be very disappointed.
Yeah.
If that was the case.
Okay, so. But we have a commission. If we allow you to put storage, so it has to look.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 that's.
No problem with that. Now, if they just open the door and make storage exits outside.
My, my issue, my issue, Brian, is that, is, and I don't mean this to disparage these particular people, but to suggest that, okay, we're going to cherry pick the easy stuff to do, and we're not going to do the rest. And then we, it doesn't work for us financially, and we walk away, and we're still stuck with a white elephant of a mall. But, and with a storage facility on one end. So that, that's my concern, so.
Yeah, and I want to, actually, I'll answer that just from a practical standpoint. That is absolutely not my intention. Anybody local here that's involved in this, that would happen. We're aware of the history. Let's just say that, you know, I'll be pretty open about that, that that's somewhat what you saw over the last, you know, decade or so. We don't think that's the best way to make this a good project for the community. Those of us that are from Adrian, and we're involved with those who are outside of Adrian, part of the ownership group, and they bought into the concept that we need to put our best foot forward, work on that demolition and boulevard as part of phase one, and we're willing to put that right in those plans. Now, can anybody predict the future? Absolutely no. But, you know, sort of to your point, will, if approved, we will move forward and demonstrate what we've came here and told you our intention is. And with the hopes, we can follow this thing through all the way to the end and see a nice project here and improve that section of town, and we think it'd be a great improvement for Adrian overall. So that's what we hope.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, other questions or comments? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this particular proposal for a planned unit development?
Yeah, this is Lynn Ponnet, and I'm just curious how many condominium units there are going to be. This is a fantastic proposal, and I'm excited about it, but we can't see the plans. And I just wondered if you could elaborate on the number of units.
So the number of units is not finalized. This is a preliminary plan, but we think the maximum might be two hundred. From like the, from the site fit standpoint.
You're speaking of residential units, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so just to clarify, there's a distinction here between condominium units, which in this case are ways for them to divide up the various parcels of land, it'd be a site condominium. They don't have any splits left here, and so just like Hobby Lobby and Ollie's were split off from the site by way of the condominium process, that's what they would propose to do with the various outlots or separately owned parcels. Except from that is a residential area, which I think would be rental housing. Is that your attention?
Well, yeah, that's what the intention would be.
Right, and that would be about two hundred residential units, up to two hundred.
Splits, though, would be nine to eleven or something like that.
I, the questioner I'm sure was asking about residential.
Residential units.
Lynn, is that?
That is exactly what I was asking about. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none? Oh, question, I'm sorry, sorry.
All these rental units, or we, are these condos for purchase?
Well, first of all, when they refer to condos, they're talking about commercial space.
But, but are they apartments?
When we talk about.
Are they rental or are they?
As, since fifty-two percent of housing in the city is rentals, I don't believe that you need more rental units. If these are for purchase, and these are a higher-end, more tax revenue generating, I'm all for it. If it's Section Eight housing, no.
Okay, all of that remains to be seen, that. Yeah, that's a waste on the road before we even consider that, so.
But what you give them a preliminary approval of is, is if, whether you know that it's for purchase or for rent, makes a difference.
Not at this point.
And I would beg to differ that we do need additional rental units in this community, as I'm sure Lynn can testify with her new current position as someone of two twenty-year-olds who have struggled to find rental housing in Adrian. It's very challenging.
Okay, commissioners, if in fact we are at least preliminary enamored with this proposal, we could, if we so chose, move to approve this in principle, the presentation that these folks have made.
Support.
Watson and Love, motion in support. Is there any additional discussion?
I think that the motion needs to stay in principle. And now it needs to be stated exactly.
Okay, I thought that's what I said.
I thought so too, but maybe not.
The motion did not say that.
Okay, the, we would.
Move to approve this preliminary development plan as.
In principle. Okay, that's the motion.
Support still stands.
Still stands, okay. Any additional discussion?
Johnson? Support.
Support.
Taylor?
Support.
Chikovits?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
Watson?
Thank you. Thank you all very much. We look forward to hearing from you in the future. Thank you. Folks, the next item on our agenda is a discussion item, and it's strictly a discussion item regarding our marijuana overlay districts. As you may recall at our last meeting, was it the January meeting? We heard from Mr. Frank Core, who has a particular piece of property on the east side, and he is looking for that particular piece of property to be included in the east side marijuana overlay district. Our discussion at the time was that perhaps we weren't interested in a specific piece of property, but in a, are we interested in, are we interested at all in looking at expanding the overlay districts? I would ask, which is which? Staff has prepared a map on this. Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair, do you want to look at all of it, or do you want to look at the east side? I've provided you with both the west and the east side in the hopes to show you what we have currently that are in the overlay district in total. But looking at Mr. Frank Core's request was on the east side.
Okay, let's, let's look at the east side.
So the east side is what Michelle has up right now. Michelle, if you could turn off zoning, please? And that some of you commissioners have this to share. So right now, that is the east side overlay, that is the total overlay that we have. So that there's quite a few properties there. However, will you turn zoning back on, Michelle, please? The purple areas indicate industrial properties, so those are potentially able to be included in the overlay. The yellow shows residential, just for sake of you knowing what is surrounding those properties. There's really no commercial over there, just purely residential industrial properties on that southeast side of town. Michelle can zoom in easily if you guys need to see specific properties. I know some of you have the computers open with them. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on this matter.
And so, Jeremy, the, the available properties for consideration of expansion of the overlay would be the ones that are purple. Is that correct?
Yes. Is there, does staff have any insight or recommendations in this regard?
What I would say is that, you know, on the, on the one hand, you want to make sure you avoid spot zoning. And so you have to pick, if you're, if you're going to expand it, you have to pick areas that are appropriate modules of land so that you're zoning a district and not a parcel. The other thing that, that I think is relevant to consider is what character the buildings in that particular area are. Now, one of the purposes that the city had in going into this venture in the first place was to encourage rehabilitation of, of otherwise obsolete buildings. And so if you have a particular area where there are such buildings, and we can get down to the more granular, lover, granular level, it's hard to say, and determine that, then that might be a likely area for include, for inclusion as additional overlay space. And I think that's what Mr. Frank Core has presented to you, is that he has a particular building, which is not available market, which is adjacent to the current overlay. He encourages you to include that. If you could find other such properties, that, you know, in our opinion, those, those would also be likely areas. You know, I don't think you want to venture into areas that are already being productively used. It would seem to be, you know, because you don't want the market to compete with other uses that are already successful. Same stuffs.
I, I have to admit that even after having looked at this quite a bit, I'm, I'm looking at the, the printout of the east side map. Now, the green part is the overlay. Okay, and so in what I've circled here is Mr. Frank Core's block there. Which is adjacent, adjacent to it on the north is residential property. Yes, okay. And adjacent to it on the south and to the west are, I presume, other industrial properties that are also in the overlays.
So that block is zoned fully industrial, but half of those homes behind Mr. Frank Core's are. Apparently you guys is residential, but they're not performing uses with zoning.
Okay.
As it is.
Okay.
How many? Four, five?
Yeah, it's that.
Are we, uh, are we short of space for, for grow operations? I mean, I guess that's one of my questions I have, are we?
We're, we're short when it comes to existing buildings. We have land available. Um, as you probably remember, we did rezone the west side to add um quite a bit of.
Sure.
What was Marvin Farms at the time. However, they have yet to build that property out.
Um, of course.
You know, studies seem to indicate a little bit of over saturation of the market. But that's not to say that existing buildings could not be reused for it. It seems that that's more what people are gearing towards is existing use. Buildings that are, you know, existing, we had the one right across the street that was recently in front of you. Um, but we've yet to have any new ones, although they've flourished to come.
So there's.
You know, I look at this as, Greg made a good point. We, we, we went after this or we decided to approve this on the basis of let's clean up a bunch of junky pieces of property in our town. Don't take this the wrong way. But that, 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 in my opinion, looking at the map, we should have included that in the first place when we did it. Cause everything on that block is industrial anyways.
Of course, of course, the reason we didn't is that there's a bunch of residential homes in that block. A bunch, I say, four, four to six.
There's, oh, I get that. There's more toxic fumes and smells that come out of Anderson Development than there is going to come out of marijuana.
I, I understand.
That's a personal statement. I, I, I mean, I have no proof on that, but you, you know.
And Brian, I was just, I was just, I know, saying this is why we did it that way.
Um. Several of those homes are owner occupied and I don't see any of them here tonight. So I would assume they've been notified or no?
No, this isn't.
No, this is not, this is not here.
Okay.
If, if we were to proceed with rezoning, they would get all the.
Yes. Um, you know. At the least, I would say we should add the back half of that block, the Gulf Street side to the overlay. I mean, it's all industrial buildings, a parking lot. And the other part of it, the corner lots already included.
So what you're saying, Brian, is? This gentleman's property plus the one just to the north.
Well, that's a.
That's a P U D already, so. So.
What?
I, well, let me. How far down Gulf Street are you talking about going?
No, just the hat, well.
Just that block?
No, no, just the side of Gulf Street, the Gulf Street side of that. Those are all separate properties, right? Yes, so the Gulf side part, yeah, he's right there, right there, yeah. And the ways are.
Yeah.
Just put this in the overlay.
Well, that's, I wanted to know if you were going down one block or?
Oh, no.
All the way down.
All of them.
All the way down.
Okay, square that off.
Square that off.
Between Dean and Golf.
Leave the other side where Horns Radiator and Continental Services are.
Right.
As, as it is.
So you want to continue that, that half?
Under the hard line.
Katrina's.
So what he's saying, or do you just do?
I would just, I would just do.
So just be. The golf do that or just hard facing golf. Okay. Yes. So, and it is adjacent to other marijuana overlay, so it's not a spot per se.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we honestly, we created a spot there when we didn't put it in, right?
Because of the residential.
Right.
That's understandable there, but you know what?
Well, again, this is an overlay, so the, the underlying zoning is industrial and so it's not a spot zone.
Yeah.
The whole area is.
No, I understand that, yeah.
It's not by the definition.
So, yeah, either bring it that back side.
Do we open ourselves up? By can, by, if we, if we were to do this, do we open ourselves up to a bunch of other similar requests?
Probably.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I'm looking at the, the triangular piece there.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to do it.
Is that considered, is that considered a possibility there?
No, no, that, I think it's just not the fair ground.
Not, that's not.
No.
Oh, the railroad, that's railroad.
That's all by the.
Alright, so that's not.
That's not an issue, yeah.
I guess I want to know, if we're going to look at this, what other parcels of land are to be considered? Right. And I mean, this makes, we're not voting on this, but what you're suggesting for this gentleman's property makes sense to me. And we won't criticize the fact that you didn't put it in there before. So, but I don't know where else we're, you know, is there a, another strip somewhere, another spot somewhere? Well, that's industrial there, yeah.
Tell you, tell you what, let's, and I, I realize this is, this is kind of what I thought we were doing last month. Uh, but let's, let's do this again. Well, let us.
Give serious consideration to this particular piece of. And in fact, ask. Very hard for me to get us. So the soonest I can get this is May.
Let's, let's put this particular piece of property for consideration on the agenda for the May meeting for inclusion in the east side overlay.
The property itself or this area we just?
The, the area we discussed.
The whole area, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, as Brian suggested.
The Gulf Street side of that block.
Those blocks, right.
Okay. Are those, then, we have to do this again if someone on the Dean Street side?
Well, this is what I was, you know, reconsidering.
They're going to get noticed and they're going to show up.
Yeah.
If somebody's like, I want my property. Yeah.
So if it would be, I don't know, I guess if we're.
Let's just go with.
If we're cleaning that up, we would just do the both sides of it.
I mean, I think you got to think about the value of those structures and whether it's significant, which I would suspect it's not. And, you know, if some, a- as you point out, some of that land on the east side of that block is, is just parking lots. And so if one, we're going to try to create a module of land to build a building on, you know, wouldn't you be inclined if there were homes that were for sale for relatively affordable price to combine them and utilize? Yeah, right, enhance the size, yeah, use, use parking lot as parking lot and, and build your building on the other side.
So you're advocating for considering, considering the whole block?
I, I think you, yes. I, I mean, considering it and including it doesn't mean that the, the homes can't continue to be used. Just like right now, they're in the industrial district and they've continued to be used.
As residential.
As residential.
Okay.
Eyes, just uh provides an option uh to create a, a more reasonable module of land for development.
Yeah.
For those persons.
Okay. Folks, are we okay with that? If that's what we're asking staff to prepare for us?
I just, I, I would like to ask the representative of marijuana industry here a question while he's here.
I, I have multiple uh insights on this.
And I just want to, I mean, I want to ask you, as a industry person, I read all these things in the paper.
I'm here for this reason.
And, you know, I read all these things in the paper that say the price has taken a tank. You know, is the.
Well.
Overdevelopment, I mean.
There's, there's multiple aspects to this.
So, you know, I read all these articles that say the price has taken a tank from what it was when you guys all came three, four years ago. Is there going to be a demand for, it kind of seems like things have kind of slowed down on the demand for proper, property to process and grow?
One hundred percent.
Yeah, that, that's kind of my question. I mean, we're, we're. At the beginning of this, it was like, every piece of property in town is going to go for ten times what it's worth. They're all going to get fixed. Well, it sure seems to me like everything's kind of hit the brakes.
So.
And I'm not too worried about people coming in here and demolishing that whole block to put a marijuana grow in there. Cause not going to happen. Seems to me like a lot of guys are leveraged up their, that they're in trouble.
Oh, I, I know a few. Well, let me first and foremost say that, uh, Mr. Frank Core, if I'm not mistaken, I do not blame him one iota for trying to get this in the overlay. But it is my understanding this was in the original overlay. And it was taken out. Maybe I'm mistaken.
It might have been discussed.
But. Okay, and I can go back to original maps that I were sent back in two thousand eighteen and we can verify whether or not that was the case.
We, we went through a lot of them.
However, I, it's my understanding that it was changed. The other thing that was changed was the west overlay, which I am an owner of part of the west overlay. And I quite frankly control uh what dispensaries go in there. We added a hundred and fifty-six acres to the overlay on the west side. And said that so-and-so was going to build a processing and cultivation. It's never happened. That same company that you thought was Anheuser-Busch is currently growing in Jackson and processing in Jackson and currently selling. Yet they're going to, uh, and they have realty signs up on the west overlay to sell five and ten acres, which could allow for unlimited dispensaries. And how that affects your current proprietors in this town is immense, including one that's on the line that I hope will speak. It's if you continue to add to the overlay, you change the value of the property. You change the business model to those that invested in the city at the beginning. You cannot change the overlay. I gave up once, flourish gave up once, we will not give up again.
I'm not quite.
What I mean is that we, we, we said nothing when the west overlay was amended. We said nothing. Flourish has every reason to be upset with you that you proposed by staff sitting here at, at this, 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 in this room, that you're going to allow a dispensary next to a daycare. Flourish sold their front lot to North Coast Labs because they knew they couldn't have a dispensary. I knew that our property could have dispensaries and we've never expanded on that. The reason we are not building is multitude of reasons. But first and foremost, current, let me just give you the state of the industry. As of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, there were four hundred and sixty-one class C grows in AU, each one allowing twenty-five hundred plants. Now, I'm no math genius, but I can easily grow two hundred pounds per month on a twenty-five hundred plant grow. In addition to those fifty, uh, four hundred and sixty-one class C grows, there's fifty-six excess growers. That's unlimited plants. At that moment in time, three hundred and fifteen thousand plants in flower. There were only twenty-one thousand pounds sold in the month of December. There were thirty-eight thousand pounds sitting in dispensaries and forty thousand sitting in cultivation test pass. Let's fast forward to January. I don't have February numbers, but I'll get them to you. Twenty-four thousand pounds were sold, forty-two thousand pounds sitting in dispensaries, forty-four thousand pounds sitting in cultivation. It's a bloodbath. I bought twenty-two pounds for eight hundred dollars or less. From someone in this town. There will be cultivators that go out. If you add to this, there's nothing to say they have to build cultivation. It could be another dispensary. And you've already said this is the overlay. Quit expanding the overlay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just to clarify on the, the dispensary question. So within the overlay, there, there are dispensaries allowed, but they, they must be in connection with a grow facility. They can't be standalone dispensaries. Now, we don't currently define in ordinance how much you have to grow to be a grow facility. And so, you know.
Five plants.
Yeah, yeah, in theory, it could be a small amount.
Okay. Anybody else that wishes to address the planning commission?
Well, I feel like that's an issue that needs to be dealt with too.
Yes.
What he just brought up, if that, you know, i- if I can throw one plant in the corner and say, oh, I'm a grow. He's right. You know, that, I think that's an issue that.
Yeah.
Needs to be addressed.
That's more, maybe more important.
Yeah, yeah. Cause he's right.
Yeah.
He's right. I completely agree with what he said.
I, I'm, the question I asked in the very beginning, although no one will ever admit that I'm a student on occasion, um, was do we need more space to grow? Do we need more property to grow? And, and I, well, I mean, I knew, I knew the answer to that before.
Well, and the, the answer is no, because we've got all sorts of property, vacant property already designated as.
Right, but we also have structural properties that could be renovated.
Yeah. Do we need to? I don't want to sound uncaring to Mr. Frank Core's circumstances. But on the other hand, if we were to move forward with this, this sounds to me like something that we would be doing specifically for his benefit and pretty much his benefit alone.
Sorry, thank you. It's my understanding from the last time we discussed this, that we were going to look at the overlay as a whole.
Yeah.
Not just for this one property. And if we were going to make changes, we were going to do it all together. Was, was that correct?
That was my understanding as well.
So I, I, I'm not in favor of moving forward to, with just one. I really would like to have a full review of the whole overlay to decide if we're going to do any expansion or not.
And I, my own opinion is if that, if that's what we're going to do is look at it from an overall point of view for potential expansion. Based on the articles I've read and the report we get from the industry, we don't need to expand.
And we'll say if we're going to go back and take a thorough look at this, it's very difficult, despite the magic that, uh, Michelle always works on the screens, to, to picture everything, you know, we really need to sit down with a large map and have a work session if we're going to do this. I'm not necessarily in support of moving forward with the process, but it's, I'm, I'm at one vote of it. And I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's hard to know, uh, how those three streets over, there's a little piece of industrial property without sitting down and looking at it, not going back and forth on the screen, so.
And you're actually right, but unless, unless our consensus is, is that we've got more than enough marijuana grow spaces available. In which case. By bottom.
I, you know, I, I would agree with that. I think we do have enough, but you know, maybe we're not quite at a point in the industry's history to know whether we need to reassess it again or not.
I think it's Mr. Kennedy.
Do Mr. Frank?
Give us just one second and then you can, yes, okay. Let's see if we can wrap this up and then, yes, you can, please.
Well, I think as Mr. Kennedy commented, there's a larger state of the industry that we're not aware of. And what the current inventory of property is, a volume that's sitting idle or the volume that's being produced. I think that's a piece that I guess should play into the overall consideration and, and area.
Which, that makes sense, but I think that being new to these overlay maps, relatively new, I still think we should take a look at them and see if they, if what we have makes sense. Or if there are properties that may have been thought about a couple of years ago and taken out for some reason. Maybe now is a good time to relook at those and go, hmm, okay, we probably should have put it in. Or we, you know, maybe, I don't know, we trim off some. I'm not even sure if that is something we would look at. So I just, I think Dr. Love here said, uh, you know, spot zoning. It's not spot zoning, but are there spots that we should be looking at either for or against adding or removing?
Mr. Frank, what did you wish to say?
Not going to argue with anything he says. I mean, I'm, I'm ignorant of that fact, but things cycle, you know, he's talked.
But things cycle, you know, he's talking about it's a down market in the grower, the marijuana. Two or three years from now, hey, we're going to get Trump back in twenty twenty-four. Everything's going to go up, so.
That's not helping your case.
No, I trust me, I'm not.
Oh, I don't know. This depends.
So all's I'm saying is that, you know, if the industry's taking a downturn now, that's not to say that it won't have a meteoric rise again in two or three or four years. And then will you be back at the same spot saying, God, I wish I would have added that strip between golf and D? And that that's the only thing I have to add to that. I I can't, I can't dispute.
We don't know what the future.
I'm I'm not opposed to look, I mean, to do our due diligence, we probably should just go back and go through it and look and be like, okay. Yep, I agree with all this stuff. Done, and then people can't say we haven't, you know, it's been how long?
And that's what I thought part of it was, to be able to do.
Yes.
Is to say we did evaluate it, because from the beginning, I rejoined after I joined after these were created. But one of the things, the first meetings when I was here, is those who created said, well, we're not going to look at them for a while. Well, it's been a while, maybe we should relook at them and then just say, okay, we looked at them. Whether is or is, I'd also like to see almost like a vacancy report of vacant uh vacant buildings in the overlays versus out of the overlays. And what's there?
Go ahead.
I mean, if people searching for vacant properties to build in, are they there? If they're not there, then we don't need to do anything. If they're there, maybe they need to be included. I don't know.
Do we have a development agreement with the people that bought the big piece of property? On beach or no?
No.
Well, they just owned it out, right?
Right.
What was your question, Brian?
The question was, do we have a, does the city have a development agreement with the poppy people that bought with our property?
Oh.
I'm sorry. Marvin Farm.
No, really.
We we do not. The answer. Do we do we have available to us of vacant property information? Not necessarily.
No, not necessarily. I mean, we have to do like a windshield survey to try to determine what's what.
Yeah. Um. Do we want to have a work session at some point in the next thirty days and get together with maps in front of us? Is that going to be helpful? Do we need more input from staff relative to what's out there?
If we had an inventory, what's out there in 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 the zone that are in the overlay areas? And we think there's sufficient space there, why would we need to go to the next step?
I think that's fair.
But but I think what we heard was, we thought we were going to look at at the whole overlay um, for for issues, and then what I think I heard at the very beginning is perhaps this piece should have been in the overlay to begin with. So if there are places like that, then should we not look at those and say, well, maybe that was our oversight in in looking, and I'm not saying that I that I agree with expanding the overlay district uh, just because we think, oh, there's property there that we maybe can unload on in in some way. But I think that I think that we should look at the entire overlay, and it's been a while, as I think Commissioner Love says, since they were, since it was created, and it's probably time to to take a look and see if that's reasonable in light of of where we are now and what we're seeing now. So I'm all in favor of a work session to look at the whole thing.
How about if we ask for, if if we take a look at the overlay maps, east and west side, along with, and and I think it maybe works a lot better, at least for myself, if we have a map laid out in front of us with people sitting around.
Exactly, exactly.
But and and identify or ask staff to identify industrial properties that are not currently included in the overlay districts. Identify those, which I realize is what you've already got here, Jeremiah, but but maybe in a little different format.
I think part of what Mr. Taylor and I would like to see as well is also what ones that are in the overlay that are used with a grow operation and see have that marked on a map as well, so we can care compare on the map what's in the overlay and what's being used as well as what's not in the overlay and what's happening.
If 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 sixty-five percent of the property and buildings in the overlay districts are not being used, and there's no movement on them, I would say.
Leave it as is.
Leave it be, you know. If ninety-five percent of it, and and we had people lining up, and Mr. Kennedy came and said, yeah, I need thirty more acres. But we'd sell, so we sold him some up, but anyway, you know, I I just, I'd like to know where we are with all that.
Okay.
So I, instead of large maps, which I can do, we do have a plotter that works occasionally. We do have TVs that I don't know if we could put out here, but I can present to you on the TV zooming and to show you what properties do and do not, and we are able to measure. That was my hope with this, but obviously the TVs are very far from you. But I can do large maps with you for you, if that's what you prefer. But obviously, we're all going to be crinkling giant thirty-six by forty-eight papers around, but that's, you know, that's at at your.
Well, I mean, you know, just consider it a different type of charrette, and we'll sit around the table. I mean,
Yeah.
you're going to have two maps, basically, right?
Yeah.
They're all, they're all going to be in that same space, and I realize it's, but I don't know, I just I've got my computer here, I'm going back and forth, and I'm clicking the, and that's okay. But I need, you know, I need to be able to go block by block, the purple to purple, to be able to look at.
I I would say if we go that route, then the we consider either the east or the west. If you want to consider both, I would do two different maps, so that way you can see.
Absolutely.
Um, one large map would be
No, no, no.
just as hard as.
Is there really any reason to consider the west?
No, I would say I would say that. The west, the west is like we talked about, it's it's greenfield planned, and, uh, you know, clearly, we don't need any more of that. As has been discussed, there's many, many, many acres there that are undeveloped currently. But what we're really trying to look at is existing structures or uh, otherwise blighted obsolete sites that could be repurposed, uh, potentially for this use, it seems to me.
So do we want to schedule a work session now, or shall we okay, our calendars, and I e- and I will email us all and.
Left my phone at home. Can't believe it.
Let let us let us re reconvene with a with a date sometime in the future. Non-specific. Wait, you want to set a date right now?
No, what do you mean reconvene with a non-specific date?
Let us let us not set a date right at the moment, okay?
But not convene before.
No, no, I'm sorry, but let's let's not set a date right at the moment, but let's let me check with Jeremiah as to how long it will take for him to produce the information that we're asking for, for one thing, and then gather you together electronically and see which date works for us. How does that sound?
Fair.
We also need to address that scroll.
Yes, yes, like.
And and also.
And that's probably a s- a separate issue, but maybe at the same time, a change in the ordinance that would specify.
I think we need to put that on the next meeting and discuss it.
Say again.
The the issue is, the ordinance currently says, if you have a growth facility, you can also have a dispensary, but it doesn't say how big your growth facility has to be. You can have five plants, and you're entitled to a dispensary. So we need to address that as well. And we'll do that for our next for for the May meeting.
For May, um, if you want us to.
Well, do you, uh, do you want us to just, uh, set a public hearing on proposed language, or do you want us to bring language to you at? May, we can bring language to you at your April meeting.
Then let's do that, then let's do that.
It would not be able to be a formal public hearing.
No. Exactly. Is that okay, folks, if we take a look at some proposed language in the April meeting that would address the grow slash dispensary issue? We'll ask Jeremiah to work on coming up with an east side overlay map that shows both the overlay districts and not overly industrial properties and where current growth facilities are located. And once we have that, then we will set a date for a work session.
So we're not going to look at the west side at all?
No, at the moment.
Would still be interesting to see, um, that same thing that Commissioner Love and Commissioner Taylor were were asking for the east side. It would be interesting to see, um, what that looks like on the west side, too.
What do you mean?
Except there's just.
The the occupancy of where are the what's being done, where where the growth.
There's only.
Are what's being used.
There's like four pieces of property, and two of them have a grow.
Okay, then we'll just note that.
And in regard, it's a testing facility, um, a grow facility, um, and then there's vacant land on the other two locations. This is right now.
You say.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other business to come before us to see?
May I address the commission?
Please. Eric Kennedy, uh, one zero nine East Momi. I I will say that I feel for Mr. Frank Core, I feel like that parcel should have been in the original overlay if it was not. If the overlay was changed at one point, does that gentleman deserve for that to be in the in the overlay? Yes, he does. Uh, my concern is no different than the rest of the planning commission and the city commission. How are you controlling the amount of dispensaries? And the solution was, when they passed the ordinance, was the east and west overlay allow for unlimited. So my question to you, are you abs- and I I am not positive, but are you absolutely positive that I can't do theoretically thirty different dispensaries on that thirty acres I own on West Beach? Because if I can, then I'll start parceling off and selling it. It affects everything. When you add to the overlay, you affect other people's property. When you exclude their property, you've affected their value. And so when you maneuver that overlay, it affects everyone. You have to stop adjusting the overlay. If he was in it, he deserves to be in it. If he was not, he does not. Thank you.
Anybody else on any topic?
Yeah, Ken Tocars, one ten South Locust, very disappointed. Very disappointed in the way public comments are made, like the meeting's out of control. I'm calling becau- or I'm in here today because I had sent you guys some requests to look into some signage that I didn't feel was following the code. And I think you did take care of the one at the BP Gap Station. I think you took it care of the signage at twenty-four B fit. But there still were a couple other signs on that list, specifically the urgent care. There's an urgent care just south of the one urgent care that has signage that isn't even probably half the size of what's on the urgent care that I brought to your attention, and I was wondering if someone could address where you're at with that. In regards to the BP, um, you guys were able to get that sign removed, and I applaud you for that. And I guess that kind of shows that the city ordinances do work, and that if you tell someone to do something, that they are required to do that. I I I bring that up because the city of Adrian is proposing a point-of-sale ordinance. And what you've just shown is that the current systems work, it's just that they're not being used by the city. So I'm kind of against a point-of-sale ordinance, and I think you guys have documented by enforcing some of these issues with the signs that I've brought up, that the rules in place can work and that we do not need this point-of-sale ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, we'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Support.
Weatherby and Roberts, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.